There's no display.
Hello, how are you?
I said it's that.
Who is that? Who is it? Oh, okay.
They'll be right back. Before he left, he said they were having some technical difficulties, so we'll see if we can get it going.
So we can't move the city for...
Because?
Because we can't even, we can't even prove our legal financial charges.
Right.
Any year. It's gonna be in deficits.
Okay, I see.
Hello, Mayor, how are you?
How's your night, how are you?
Okay. You, have you met a new councilperson, Jackie Goodrich?
How are you, Jackie?
He's ready.
Why can't I see you?
I got, I got your face on there, I can see you. You're looking for trying to get the video done, but it can't.
Oh, there are people walking there.
They don't get it.
Okay, adjust the computer gets close. The one that's on the stand.
If it really gets dark.
Hello, okay. You there? Yeah, no, it... Can't really... Yeah, yeah. Okay. I'll sit on that still, okay, just a minute.
So when he goes to court, you go to court, guys know how to discuss what happened.
Okay. Can you see everybody now? Okay. Got it?
Close the lid just a little bit, like towards you, bend it down a little bit.
Oh.
The screen of the computer, like pull it down a little bit.
Okay, how's that?
It still needs adjusted, you have to pull the screen down, you, you pushed it up, it's gotta be pulled...
Oh, okay.
Pulled towards you. Let's, okay, yep, now I can see Nate.
That minute?
Yeah, I can see, Billy won, went up, I can see the two councilors sitting there. And when the mayor goes to speak, if he could move over towards Council President Martin, everybody will be in the video.
Okay, you, you got it, you got the mayor now?
A little bit more, Mayor, could you scoot over a little bit, please?
Okay, now.
Perfect, I can see your handsome face now, sir, there you go. Okay, you're good, everybody that's on Zoom can see the three of you now.
Okay.
And the sound quality is fantastic.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Willa Hammond, and this is the Mayor's Call Special Council Meeting. And as it is the Mayor's Council Meeting, I am serving as his clerk. And we will, see it doesn't look like we have a form, but anyway, we will announce the meeting and call the roll. So this is Special Council Meeting, Thursday, December twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty P M. In the Council Chambers, and it's called by Mayor Brandon L. King. Okay? Will the Chair call the meeting to order?
Thank you. Good evening, East Cleveland.
Good evening, ladies.
Thank you all for coming out. It is Thursday, December twenty eighth.
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth. This is a special call Council Meeting of the Mayor. The reason for this meeting, in case you have not received the memo, is to...
Just a moment, Mayor. Want me to call the roll or you'll continue and then I'll call the roll?
So I tell you what, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read this, let's call the roll first, and then I'll read the memo into record.
Okay, Council President, Nathaniel Martin?
Present.
Counselor Jacqueline Goodwin?
Present.
Okay, at this point, it is currently five forty-nine, and we do not have a form as of yet.
And I'll say for the record, I, I haven't heard from any of the councilpeople, whether they're going to attend or not. But it's the Mayor's meeting.
Per the Charter of the City, the Mayor is allowed to call a special meeting, is per Article one oh three A. City Charter, the Mayor can call a special meeting of council. As this memo states, it is to ensure the continued financial progress of our city as we enter into the new year. It is written to request and inform pursuant to Article one oh three A of the East Cleveland City Charter that I have scheduled a special council meeting for Thursday, December twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two, at five thirty P M. For councilors, it will take place in the City Council Chambers. Members of the public... If the members of the public exceed health and safety limits with the City Council Chambers located, public will have access via Zoom. As we still remain in fiscal emergency, our fiscal autonomy is restricted, and we are being guided by fiscal oversight and the Fiscal Commission. At its December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, the Commission advised that we pass financial legislation prior to the end of the year. This meeting is to assure that the government continues. I'm sure we've all heard before, if there's not appropriations in place, by the coming of the year, the government cannot operate. So the Fiscal Commission asked me personally, what was I doing to ensure that the government can operate? That is why I called this meeting, to try and get the twenty twenty-three permanent appropriations passed. With the understanding that those appropriations could be, and would need to be changed throughout the year accordingly. We have been in this situation before, however, we did pass a budget before the end of the year, so that the government continue, could, could continue to operate. As we have never been in this place, I'm not sure what we do from a legal perspective to keep services operating. As without a budget, we will be unable to pay our health and safety services, police, fire, and so... I can only hope for the best for the city. We're gonna hang around here for a little bit, hoping that one of the other councilors come in, and we have a form, and we can pass the twenty twenty-three appropriations. Till then, we can have an, an open dialogue and a discussion as a residency fit, while, while, while we pass time. As Council President, you...
Yeah. Yeah, I'd like to say this. According to the Charter, I couldn't make that appointment to feel war three, and I've made that appointment. She was spawning this morning, Jackie Goodrich. And I need to say this about her, she, she ran for office and she, she did pretty well. We miss Ernest Smith, we, we miss him tremendously, but certain people have their own agenda in that. So she is, until the, until proper process and procedures follow, she is the councilperson right now. All governments, and I'll say this so that you can connect with it, has to follow proper process and procedure. Okay, so that's where we are right now. I am very concerned that we have a budget, we need to make sure that I, not only just the fire, police, but I, everybody's paid. And it's responsibility of elected officials, no matter how they feel about certain things, to be here. To not to be here, this is the second time we tried to have a meeting, and, and it just didn't happen. I'm not mad, I don't take this scene personal, but this is business. But we don't need to be in a situation where we're in the media saying that we have not paid up. Now, we have an option, we don't have to do the budget, we can do one-third of the budget, we have till March thirty-first. We could do that to make sure people pay, but to, to be so irresponsible not to be here, all I can do is shake my head. Before I came here, I prayed about the situation that maybe we can work things out. And I haven't had a lot to say to the media from all the negative things I'm hearing from certain females, I'll just put it that way. I know what, what I'm about, I know what I'm trying to do. I will say that this year, it's been a very challenging year. And I think a lot of this has got to do with power and ego, power and ego, that's really what, what it's about. But we're gonna get through it. So I wish Jackie the best, give you your best gift skills and talents, cogitate, analyze, everything that we do. We're here not to be on a evening trip, but to serve the citizens of East Cleveland. I've been lucky enough almost to be here now thirty years, thirty years, so I've seen it all, nothing is new, okay? But this power thing that I've been feeling lately is, I've never seen it before, I mean, it doesn't make any sense. From certain other councilpeople, I'm not getting notices, my crew will tell you that, you don't see me anything, okay? But I don't argue with them, because they just accomplish anything, but, but they'll say, well, we did this, we did that. The Charter, which is our Bible, tells what we need to do, and they haven't followed the Charter, that's...
So for a matter of clarity, and, and just for the record, I'm fortunate enough to be Mayor from City Council. One of the things that we discussed when I was on council was having budget hearing with the different departments. This year, we had budget hearings. I don't remember the dates of the budget hearing, but we had them over a two-day period.
No, no.
One-day period.
We made history, we had them one day, and everybody showed. Okay, so we didn't draw this thing out too, but we hit it one day, and I feel good about it, so we gotta do that again.
Yes.
Yes.
Per the Charter, the Mayor's estimate is due November fifteenth to City Council. We had it to City Council by the fifteenth. Given that we're in fiscal emergency, we're under state supervision, they have requested every year that I've been an elected official, that we pass a permanent appropriation. Understanding that the permanent appropriation would need to be adjusted two to three times throughout the year. When I was on council, it was always that way, right? When I became Mayor, it remained that way, we reappropriate two or three times throughout the year, just to balance the line. So it, it kinda troubles me that, you know, I'm not sure we'll have a budget in place as we start the new year. And, and I'm not sure how we operate from there. So... We'll hang around for a couple of questions, are there any questions or concerns from anyone in the audience? We'll take with a, with a raise of a hand, yes?
Remarks of the public on agenda items on?
So, so, no, what, what, what we're gonna do is we're just gonna take questions, and we're just gonna have a conversation. What I, what I would appreciate is that if you have a question, please ask your question, right? No, don't take this as an opportunity to get up and, and grandstand and give us a ten-minute spiel and have no question at the end of it. If you have a question, we are more than happy to address it, yes, please?
So, East Cleveland, I'm the Mayor, my question to you is, the vision for East Cleveland is to move forward without a budget, without a council in place. This city cannot move forward. What do you see, or how do you see East Cleveland moving forward without leadership, without a government, without a budget?
So thank you for that question, we have some challenging times ahead of us. Coming out of the recall election that, that just took place, and it was basically a, a grab for power. It was basically an attempt to hijack the city's government, as we were telling residents. And, and that, that is where we're at. We met with residents maybe two, three weeks ago, and the residents want to take back their government. The residents talked at length about taking back their government in the form of recalling the people who are on City Council, creating and causing all this chaos, right? So as it stands now, that's where we are as electors of this community. We need to come together, and we need to take back our government from those who do not wanna see progress, those who are fighting us at every turn, those who are seeking to basically hijack this government. So that's what I see us having to do as electors. Councilman President, do you have any words on that?
What, what I need to see is this, and I, and I try to be positive, is responsibility of a councilperson to be here. If you, if you have a problem with the budget, it needs to, it needs to be articulated in the meeting, but to not be here? And we got a hundred-something people looking to get paid, and, and you're not here? That's a problem. Because the Charter has not been followed, and I say that again, because it has not been followed, the chief of office is not the councilperson that these certain people want. The law direction will confirm that, okay? Now, if they wanna take me out of the presidency, I'm fine with that, but do the right thing in terms of following the proper process and procedure. You not being here is, is totally irresponsible, okay? We gotta do better than that, and, and I, and I want you to look at this situation for what it is, okay? Over the last two or three weeks, they've been having these meetings, never sent me a message, never, okay? Because I'm straight about things, that I'm fair, but all these meetings that they had the last two weeks, they've never sent me a message about it. Nothing, you check the Charter out, you're not following the proper process, you're not doing it, okay? Now, because we have five councilpeople, three carry the day, but you gotta do it right. Now, maybe officially, let you may, may, may get on it, I, I don't know, but right now they're not following the proper process, so he's not on you. The Charter gave me the right today to make the appointment, not make the appointment, okay? If they have a major problem, then they think we're doing it right, we might end up in court, but you gotta do right, but, but you not be here? It's unacceptable, thank you.
I'm, I'm gonna come here, and then we'll come here, yes, please?
Okay, real, three real quick questions, first, has it been thirty days? That was my first question.
Yes, as today.
Is it today?
Yes.
Secondly, do we can, do you consider the meeting they had on Tuesday to be a legitimate legal meeting?
No.
Okay. And third, I, I see a meeting is posted for tomorrow.
Right.
With the same, same agenda.
And, and again, I, I wanna jump in the mirror. Councilperson, right now, the new councilperson is just late, because they haven't followed the proper process. The law direction will give you the legal opinion, so we, we don't jump on this hazardly.
We need your help.
So we, we research this, okay, it's been researched, okay?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I don't like saying that. Did you receive a notice of a meeting held on this past Tuesday?
No. I haven't. You wouldn't listen to me, Mr. Amazing. I haven't gotten anything. I know that they posted something that outside our door and I think something outside, but I have not received. Today there was something stuck in my box today seeing a meeting on the twenty seventh and twenty eighth. It's stuck in my door.
So as a matter of clarity, on the twenty eighth, we had this memorandum, mayor special call me delivered to their residents. And we have full documentation that it was delivered at their residence per the charter.
What part of the charter that you say that wasn't followed with the election?
I don't have it.
And the charter says to remain in council. Feel the position that become empty, become a vacant on the council. Not no one else, the council. One hundred, you can read it for yourself.
I read one.
And number two, I would like to know what procedure were not followed with the council.
They didn't have a plan, yeah.
Majority of the council met and chose a person. They said thirty days, if the council has not met within thirty days or found a person, then the president has the opportunity to appoint someone. But they have did it and I know the
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was waiting to I'll give her respect. She doesn't respect while I'm speaking. Number two, number three. First of all, whether there was a recall, there was a recall. And the board of election certifies the recall. They notify the clerk of council as to what was on that agenda, whether a person had been recalled. They can't do it until which time the petitions are certified. And they weren't certified, they notified the clerk. That's the law. Number two, I would like, I ask this, or number three of this. I'm still asking from the law director as well as which doesn't have no, nothing to do with this, nor does the mayor. The court ruled on that before. We've been here before. The same identical thing. And you was hooping and hollering at that time, Mr. Martin, and reference to the mayor at that time wanted, I mean, appointed someone to counsel. Be section one thirteen. B and C, it tells you the mayor cannot point anyone to court or counsel.
Yeah, I got it.
But that happened at that time. So just letting you know. And so I want to know when did you start the election? And that has the, now, let me put it this way. The council, the majority of council, whether you say you weren't notified, but I think they did it. Let me finish the point. You said that you were not notified.
That's right.
They said they were, you were notified. The council three councils met here.
Who are the three councils? Who are the three councils?
I was in. Behovia. Behovia.
Stevenson?
Stevenson, Gally. Those are three councils. That was the one. Now, the notices was posted. They did that. Minutes was taken. Now, I'm asking my question to you is this. The three majority, which you said you were not notified.
Not notified, go ahead.
I chose and elected someone and swore their name. And that's irrefutable. And
Where are the minutes?
They took minutes. They have the minutes. The minutes was taken at each one of the meetings. That's the minutes was taken. Tonight, you don't have no clerk here?
This is not, this is the mayor's meeting, not the council meeting.
Well, it's council. No, 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 excuse me. Even whether the mayor calls, he has that right to call the meeting. I know what the charter says.
He has the right to have a clerk.
But, but, no, 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 excuse me.
He sees the clerks tonight.
Excuse me, let me finish. You have clerks. And if you call a meeting, the mayor calls a meeting. And if they don't show, there is no meeting. And what have you. And the clerks should be here. Where is the clerk?
Here I am.
Okay, thank you.
You're not the clerk. No, you're not.
Let's stop. Mr. Please. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your question. That's it. That's it. We'll address him. We'll address him. Go ahead.
Not only she's the clerk, she's the law director.
Yes.
Would you respond to?
Yes, please. And then that, and then that's
Legally, so he knows what
No, I know what
Listen, listen, listen.
Listen, shut up. You shut up.
Come on.
Okay, have you seen, and then when everyone is finished, I will read the legal
Read the legal opinion. Thanks.
Please, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What a legal opinion. You have a tendency to go on somebody's case and not follow the law.
Thank you.
Okay, hold it. Justin, can you wait till you respond to old mate's?
Oh, yeah.
Then you're next. Then you're next. Go ahead, go ahead, Law Director, please.
Well, I was gonna wait till
Okay, we can wait today. Just for, just for the record, if I'm not mistaken, the board of elections certified on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, I think it's twenty nine.
So, and today is the twenty ninth of December. So, excuse me, sir, before you, there was a lady over here who had a question. I want to acknowledge her question and then we'll come back, right back to you.
Okay.
Hello.
I'm Mr. Gwendolyn, fifth friend of East Cleveland. And I just want to ask if you have other resources you can use, like, do you have a grant you can use to pay civil services until that's resolved?
So thank you for the question. We have our finance director is here. And what is our book balance? Yeah, so we have funds to cover expenses. We don't have appropriations to then spend. I'm sure you remember when the government, federal government shut down a couple of years ago, we were facing that same scenario. Without a passed appropriation, we have, we can't spend any money. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, I think that I don't know if there's anybody in this room more knowledgeable of the law than me. Maybe why?
No, I'd be too. No, I'm just kidding.
But unfortunately, this is a terrible situation. I mean, sometimes some people, you should think before you talk. So the problem with the this is that he said that he wasn't notified, so the meetings they held weren't valid. Unfortunately, they just said that he saw two notices in his mailbox that were from the twenty seventh and twenty eighth. Now, you don't have to bust down his door and hand it to him in his face. He just said that he was notified.
I got
He was notified because it was in his
I got the notices today.
So you just said you were notified, Nate.
Today.
Even if you got it next year.
Doesn't matter.
Let me finish though, Nate. So the question, I'm about to get to the question, but the law says you're supposed to be notified. Even if you saw the letter ten years from now, you were notified because you said it was in your box.
All right, that's fine.
So you were notified, Nate.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Because that, I didn't understand that.
May the audience speak.
What can we do for our city to change the recall process? Because it's recall, it's recall, it's recall, it's recall. And in the war that I live in, we have selected me in the past, residents in the past, and even though the people have in our war have said over and over that this is who we want, they continue to do it and take it away. I think that's ridiculous. I mean, it should be a limit to how many times you can recall somebody. And then they're not performing a job. You can't perform your job fighting and be in office all the time. And I just think it's idiotic.
I appreciate that question. When we were on council, they recall, they attempted to recall the former mayor seven times. Seven times. Other municipalities have rules on the books as to how many times you can try to recall someone in a given term. And then a rule which states that if you weren't part of the electorate that elected this official, you cannot sign the recall petition. Now imagine we have a certain population here that's a transient population, renters. Imagine they come into the city and they're presented with all these fake news and all these outright lies in most cases as to what an elected official has done to get them to sign a petition. And they do. Some cities, including Cleveland, have that rule on the books. Right? So as residents, I would continue to come to the council meetings and then ask council to put it on the ballot, because this is something the residents would have to vote on. Right? All council would have to do, and the former mayor bought it to us as a council. We couldn't get the four votes needed to send it to the board of elections, to put it on the ballot. Right? But if we get enough residents to show up to tell our council that, hey, we want this on the ballot because we want to vote on it, and this is what we wanted to say. I think that's what we do to address that. Thank you.
Good evening, great people of East Cleveland, city council. Pastor Jackie Goodger, I told him I'll call you Pastor, Sister Jackie Goodger. Congratulations. Look forward to hopefully working with you. Our next War Three meeting is Thursday, January fifth at the Civic Center at six P M. Of course, you may, you may wind up making your own meetings in the future, whatever, but we really hope to see you, to hear from you. Hear about your future plans and see where can we be of help to you to continue moving this war forward. You were the only one that had enough love in your heart to campaign last year. And I believe I can speak on behalf of myself and the people. We appreciate that. A lot of us see, those who pay attention, we see what's going on. Me, myself personally, I don't feel that the recall process, to me, the people have a right to recall whenever they want to. What it is, I definitely don't need you. What it is, we don't need sitting elected officials or former elected officials that go around making up terrible, terrible lies on other elected officials during that recall or any election or period. An elected official is not supposed, elected official is supposed to be truthful, transparent, and never, never laugh for political gain. And that's what these people have done. That's what some of their political operatives has done. The last meet, the last meeting, he waits until he gets in the hallway to admit that I didn't assault him. Well, it's on camera. Now, with all their lives they've been going around all last year, now none of them saying it. So again, I know that we have someone up here with integrity. I know that we have someone up here that, that especially the children, because I see you, I know you love the children. And I just look forward to you and I look forward to you meeting the great residents that you have had the pleasure of meeting. And again, in any way I could be of assistance, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name is Walter Milton Singh.
Russell Milton.
I got the program out here, Voices for My People, S O S A, Russell, daughters. I wanted to ask a question, right? So if we can't get the council to agree on changing the charter, can't we get together with the people, get petitions, and get the people to sign? So we can put it on the floor to come on the election, so we can vote for the change of the charter? We need to change this charter. In East Cleveland, this charter need to be changed. This charter ain't been changed since when? In the eighties? We really need to take a look at this charter and change this charter. Because what's going on out here? Really do.
Thank you for that. Let me just chime in on that. One of the, one of the things we've always stated is that because of the limited resources that we have here in the city, top to bottom, and in all branches, it's a challenge for us to address that. And our charter is very much outdated. Many of you will remember the, what we had to do to raise some of the fees. Right? That our administer business fees, fire prevention and whatnot, just to get us in a comparable situation with other cities and up to date. Because our charter is so outdated. Yes, the residents can circulate a petition, get the required signatures, and submit it straight to the board of elections. Yes, what I would suggest is that you come in front of council and ask. Look right at them and say, we want this. Right? And this is how we wanted to read, so that when it goes down to the board of elections, it's exactly what you want to see. Right? Because I agree, the recall should be in a democratic society, so that you can do that. Right? But just to do it as often as they did it on the former mayor is absolutely ridiculous. I think they tried to recall Wheeler three times. Right? He was on the ballot three times, a recall. What a waste of resources. A waste of resource. And then as the elected official, right now, I have to then go out and campaign. So what am I doing the work that you elected me to do? Because now I have to go and tell everybody about the fake news, the lies, the innuendos and all that stuff. Right? Which is just, again, taking away time that I have to then deal with your health, interests, rights, needs. I miss that. Yeah, you
I wanted to, for everyone to have a perspective, you need to hear from the law director and she can give you the legal perspective on the situation.
Yes, right. Before we go to her, is there any other questions or concerns? Quickly, comments? Yes, please.
We talked about community development and developing east or west anyway. What are we doing, anything east?
Yes.
Anything? How soon?
So
Anything working works?
So we have a number of feelers out there. And again, I thank the county exec, Arma Buddhists, for putting the property, the former dump out in the atmosphere to let people know we have land and location available. I'm sure many of you heard that the G E facility in Collinwood was sold. Right? So I don't know if it's supposed to say this, but people who bought Neela Park bought. They are one of the largest commercial real estate developers in the country. Right? They bought that to market it commercially along with Neela Park. Right? Keep in mind, the former Arco site is a former G E land. So we have a new development in the works. Nothing's inked in, but we have it in the works. Thank you for that. I believe there were two more and then we'll wrap it up.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. Being a longtime resident of East Cleveland and a taxpayer of generations located here in East Cleveland, what I've seen so far of city council has been disturbing. Very much vexing of the spirit, okay? It's too much division. It's too much, people want to be something that they're not called to be. The devil comes, but to steal, kill, and destroy, to divide. This city needs to not be divided. We need to come together. We need strong city council people who work as a team to make sure that everything is done by the law, by the book, and according to support the people and build up the city of East Cleveland. Yes. And with that being said, we need a whole new city council. We need Bobbiak gone, we need Stevenson gone, and we need Gally gone.
Yes.
Out the door.
We have a, we have a new voice over here. I'd love to get it. Yes.
All right, how are you?
Thank you, thank you.
Are the Zoom participants allowed to speak?
Thank you very much for saying that. It's not often we get compliments and accolades, the news is here. Right? I would ask the news to go outside before you leave, point that camera at that new clock. That clock's been up since September. And yet, the news has, the news purposely taking it up that high. Show that new clock, please. See, he ain't pointing the camera at me now, right? Yeah, he got the camera over me now. Go get that new clock, please. Show the landscape, the sea hall, show that we fixed the walkway coming into the front door. And if you had the time, go look at the employee parking lot.
Yeah.
Right? Please. Because there's a lot of positive going on in the city. I'm sorry, there was one more comment, then we're going to Will.
Before we go, can you let the people know, the taxpayers in this room know? Every time they do a dumb recall, we got to pay for it.
Yes.
Let us know that we paying for it through our tax dollars.
We're paying for it through our tax dollars. They did Wheeler, and I think the total bill was over thirty thousand by the time they did it three times. Right? This last one, even though it's, it's hidden in the general election on November, there are still costs to it. Costs, I had to go campaign, they had to go campaign, you had to listen to all of that. Right? Which really stopped progress. It stopped us from meeting with some of our partners and entertaining new partners that we are trying to get. Right? Which is one of the reasons the Metro Parks is still in limbo, right? And they're reviewing the, uh, the documents that come from Rockefeller. So we're still moving that forward. So now, so now let's, let's hear from Will and then we'll close this out.
Can the Zoom participants ask a question?
Really understand, overstand. And last week, Council Board tried to have a legit meeting to vet all the applicants, um, for the, for the appointment to city council. All of a sudden, city council, other city council members caught COVID. The next day or two days later, correct me, whichever one it was.
They wanted me.
The mayor, the mayor, uh, called for a health and safety meeting. Who strolls in? Those council people. Who, who did they get close to? Our clerks. So what did our president do? For the safe, health, interest, rights, and needs of the safety of the people, sent the clerk's home for a vacation like he should have. Because I don't think any of us wants to be around someone who openly says that they have COVID and, 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 and potentially spreads it to someone. But guess what they were doing, ladies and gentlemen? And Otis Mays shocked me if I'm alive. They had a meeting at the Live Bear, no notifications. Luckily someone, luckily someone was in there to take pictures with Latique's name already on the affidavit. How? How is that possible? The second meeting was done here. No notifications. Only reason they put, uh, uh, notification on the third meeting is somebody finally got on them and told them that they were doing wrong. But I'm pretty sure they already knew that they were doing wrong. But they've been listening to, to you, so it's, it's no telling. So, so the people of, the people of East Cleveland are not going to sit down and take this. Our very lives are, are, are on the line. I've been knowing, I respect you. I've been knowing you since I was knee-high to a grasshopper. My feelings are hurt. I'm very sad, but when I get hurt and sad, my, my head don't go down. You let these people go all around town and perpetrate this lie on a young man who you should be helping that was up there at city council doing what no other council person done since I've been alive, including you. But instead of trying to take young people under their wings, you want to step on them. You want to perpetrate, you want to help them file false charges on a city council person assault. Then you want to, you had the chance to tell everyone in the room, you had the chance, chance to tell the entire city of East Cleveland that that city council person was a liar. But instead, you waited until you got outside to finally say it was a lie. That's unacceptable. But you, people like you come in these meetings every week and, and talk like you just, like you just care so much about the health, interest, rights, needs of people. You need to stop it. You need to stop it. You news people need to come to East Cleveland when something is positive going on. There's always positive actions going on. I'm sick and tired of that. You should have been here a week, weeks ago to see this corruption. We have a sitting council person who's not here to pass the budget to move the city forward. She gonna have the judge crying again because he can't pay his workers. We have sitting council people that's willing to go around telling lies to the people for their own, uh, 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 political benefit. And then they want to actually sit another person who also went around, uh, uh, passing out lies and, I mean, terrible lies, small lies is one thing, but terrible lies of, of human trafficking. And you, and, and you go with this? It's a shame. It's a shame. Not more of all respect, the respect that I have for you, it's a, it's a shame. And you know it's wrong, you know it's wrong. You probably don't want to tell those things. Hey, say, say you have COVID and then you come here. You know what, again? Thank you all for your service.
Absolute last one is Mitch Hatchett. Absolute last one, Mitch Hatchett. Then we're going to the Law Director. So, so you don't get to respond? Mitch Hatchett, please, you, you don't get, you have no response. You can respond later. Not, not here, not right now. Not here, not right now. Not right now. There's been plenty of time where you would talk, uh-oh, people, and they didn't get a chance to respond. I'm asking you not to respond to that, to let that go. To let that go. We don't want to be out here, oh, he didn't lie at all. He didn't lie at all. He didn't lie at all. Miss Shirley Hatchett, please, go right ahead.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm a proud resident of East Cleveland. And I'm proud of the neighborhood that I come from and that we have neighborhood groups that have walked, we have walked the street to catalog the work that we want done in this city. Demolition, cutting trees, putting up lights, doing sidewalks, follows. Yeah. This was not all done on administration. This was residents who care, to get up. You got so many complaints on your street, they'll walk them, catalog it, and send it in. There's money to be spent to solve our problems. We can't solve anything if you're going to sit at home and do nothing but complain. There's people out here always ask me, what's going on council meeting? I used to tell them. You know what? I can tell you what day, what time. You want to ride, I'll even take you up if you want to know, if you want to be concerned. But I'm upset with the people that set up on that council and knowing that the plight that we are in, and we have done this work for the last three years, making a difference. The mayor's been working with us. No one has worked with us. We have worked with ourselves. And we're looking forward to that money, that the work that we have done to continue to materialize.
Yes.
Okay? And it takes a village to do what we need to do. I can't stand anybody that, you know, if you don't, you don't have to be in love with anyone. But you can show some honor and respect. And we put you there.
Right.
And if you get individuals up there that have not worked in your community, you have no place up there. Because you've got to be a community person that cares about the residents and care about what's going on. You know what I'm saying? So I give everybody their respect, and I demand respect. These people sitting up there, you know, stocking all this money that we have. You could have had, you should not have been, been, started all over again. Because they got an attitude because they don't like it in the door. Who you working for? Who are you working for? And we go up for a second, tell you what we want done, but then you sit up there and you, and then you turn it down. Then we got to go to first read, second read. You know, I may be retired, but I'm still working in this community. I still have to make a living. And I don't have any time to be coming up here when I came to the meeting that they so-called had at 5:30 and sit here till six o'clock. And just the three persons over there. We get out there in a parking lot, here come this guy, here I come, here I come, just getting off of work. And? Is that how you run the government? If you know you council people are still working, set the time when they're off. What time they get off? We don't have time to be sitting here waiting. We take time off. I mean, we could have stayed in the house, we could have been going to something else. Or maybe we counted something else because of us counting, and we come here. And there's not a large group. You know, there could be five of us that represent, uh, War Two, War Three, War Four. I don't give a damn about the wars, to tell you the truth. So I can't wait to say hello to Ms. Stevenson, Ms. Gally, and Ms. Bobbiak. I can't wait to look them in the eyes and say, what's up? What's your problem? I thought you cared about the people. You got an agenda? Your agenda should be us.
That's right.
Because I don't see anything that you're doing but poisoning everybody else. We don't have time for all these signatures. We don't have time for all the bull crap. I'm sorry. I'm not sorry. But I'm glad you're here. Some good things are going on. Lot of good things is going on in my neighborhood. Devil puts out the bad stuff. And y'all come here because I guess the worst it is, it makes better ratings. I'm getting rated here. And I rate East Cleveland being a strong, going forward. Don't like recalls, but if we got to do what we got to do to get them out of here. See y'all. We haven't missed that many meetings. Your first, uh, when they kind of, you take the minutes? I don't know. Never seen any. You know it, Mr. Mace, don't say a word, push. There's nobody particular minutes. I don't know that much about the charter, the laws, but every time I come, I'm learning and learning. You know, knowledge is very, very powerful. Okay? And the more I come to see what's going on. Come on, just show it. This, what's going on? There's just a few, there's a few people, what's going on? They don't even tell us what was going on. It was just so unprofessional. It was just sneaky.
Yes.
It wasn't right. Not with the way I was used to coming in to see the whole forum out here and the videos on it. And the clerk, Ms. Tracy, looking for all of that. What, what's going on? And all of these people that, there were seven people running for my ward. Who are they? Where they come from? What's their qualifications?
Right.
You don't pick somebody. If she's in War Two, War Three, I mean, War Two, stay in your ward. Don't be going out here over in my ward and choosing somebody that you made little bit. So you can have somebody as your little monkey up here.
That's right, that's right.
I'm still ready to fight, ready to do it right. I want honesty, and I want it done by the law.
That's right.
Because if we get you in, and we can take you out, trust and believe, we're tired of it. And it's going to grow more and more, more and more, more and more. And I say, thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, because we got work to do.
To our esteemed Law Director, I'll leave you with this tidbit. My memory serves me correctly, and we just stated how the three counselors had multiple meetings without posting, without a clerk, without somebody running. The one was on the school board and sued the school board for violating the Open Meetings Act. Took a hundred thousand dollars from the students.
Yes.
A hundred thousand, sued them for the very thing she now did, trying to hijack your government. I'm going to turn it over to the Law Director to close this out here.
Yeah, I, I think Rashid wanted to speak, but.
No, we're not taking anybody off Zoom.
Okay. Okay, this is very detailed, so it won't be as, uh, charismatic as some of your speeches. Just giving you the facts and the law, because you want the details. On November 29th, 2022, the Oregon County Board of Elections officially certified the recall of former East Cleveland City Councilor Ernest Smith. Council President Nathaniel Martin called a special meeting on December 13th, 2022 in order to interview candidates to fill Council Smith's position. At the special council meeting on Monday, December 12th, 2022, the city counselors were hand-delivered notification of a special call meeting of December 13th, 2022. Nine applications were received, three did not meet the criteria of living in, uh, East Cleveland for one year. And so there were then six candidates to be, uh, chosen from. Now, during the interviews of his seven individuals, it was discovered that Craig Dunson did not reside in the city, even though he has a home in the city. Now, there was a public notice that City Councilor Corinne Stevenson put in the paper extemporaneously defending the application process. On Monday, December 19th, 2022, Stevenson, Bobbiak, and Gally attempted to hold an unpublished meeting at the East Cleveland Public Library to do interviews. On Tuesday, December 2022, Stevenson, Bobbiak, and Gally tried to hold a special meeting in council chambers. Latique Chabass. No other applicants were notified to attend, and whether David Hunter was invited to help swear in Chabass. There are photos that exist of that particular, uh, uh, situation. Also, there exists a video of Corinne Stevenson at the East Cleveland Library early in the day on Tuesday, December 20th, 2022, being sworn in as council president accompanied by Carlos Lattimore, Otis Mace, and Latique Chabass. Prior to the evening special call council meeting where they attempted to reorganize the council, it was kind of like a dress rehearsal. There's also evidence in the form of video and photos that Mr. Chabass had already been picked as council replacement. By the oath of office paper that Council Gally was holding that had his name already typed on. On Wednesday, December 21st, 2022, the Councilor Stevenson, Bobbiak, and Gally held a non-open finance committee meeting to make changes to the mayor's 2023 appropriations. No decisions can be made in the committee meeting. The councilwoman attempted to hold another special call council meeting on Tuesday, December 27th, 2022, in an attempt to, uh, swear in Latique, and once again, to reorganize. The Sunshine Law is very clear that only those items listed on the special council adjournments, uh, agenda can be discussed. Neither the, uh, administration, Council Martin, nor the public were notified, nor were the administration and Council Martin provided with packets that have the legislation supporting documentation as stated as being required by the charter. Interviews were scheduled for Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Uh, however, when the, uh, uh, council went into executive, uh, session, they just, they had the interviews. However, the morning of Tuesday, December 13th, Council Corinne Stevenson and Patricia Blahobix had emails claiming COVID exposure and declined to come to the meeting. Nevertheless, on December 16th, 2022, Council Stevenson and Bobbiak, notwithstanding the CDC guidelines, wanted to come to the City Council Health and Safety Committee meeting. And, uh, when Bobbiak actually showed up, she refused to leave. So that ultimately, the meeting had to be canceled due to the health and safety of the other attendees. Council Stevenson and Bobbiak, with Council Gally, then scheduled at least four non-open meetings at various places, again, including, uh, one at the East Cleveland Library on Monday, December 19th, another non-open meeting on Tuesday, December 20th, another non-open meeting for the Finance Committee meeting, which was on, uh, Wednesday, December 21st, and yet another non-open meeting on Tuesday, December 27th, 2022. At the non-open meeting on Tuesday, December 20th, 2022, Council Stevenson, Bobbiak, and Gally attempted to have an executive session for which they emerged announcing that Latique Chabass was thereby elected as Mr. Smith's vacancy replacement. Again, this was done. Again, this was done in a form that opens to the public. None of the other applicants were invited to the December twentieth meeting. Despite that announcement, Council Stevenson, Blahobyak, and Gally met yet again on Tuesday, December twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, and another non-open meeting announced on the Democrats of East Cleveland Facebook page with the agenda item of swinging against to consider the opponent of an elected official. That's kind of an oxymoron, because if one is appointed, one is not elected. But anyway, at that non-open December twenty seventh meeting, again, Latique Chabass, AKA Alvin Hughes, AKA Gary Cost, AKA Yara Hughes, was announced as Mr. Smith's replacement. And none of these supposed meetings was noticed given to the public, a violation of both the charter as well as the sunshine law, ORC one two one point two two F, nor were minutes taken pursuant to ORC one two one point twenty two. The law, one two one two one point two two F. Every public body by rule shall establish a reasonable method whereby any person may determine the time and place of all regularly scheduled meetings and the time, place, and purpose of all speakers. A public body shall not hold a special meeting unless it gives at least twenty-four hours advance notice to the news media that have requested notification except in the event of uh emergency requiring immediate official action. Also, uh one two one point two two C. All meetings of any public body are declared to be public meetings open to the public at all times. A member of a public body shall be present in person at a meeting open to the public, be considered present or to vote at the meeting and for purposes of determining whether a forum is present at the meeting. The minutes of a regular or special meeting of any public body shall be properly prepared, held, and maintained and shall be open to public inspection. These meetings are on YouTube and it can be accessed, this monitored by Clerk Tracy Rodriguez Peters. With reference to the local ordinances, the East Cleveland Charter provides in section fifty-six, filling the vacancies. In any such election, if a majority of the votes cast on the question of will of any member of the council or owner of a person who is removal is sought, shall be deemed a legitimate office, become a certification of the official canvas of that election to the councils and the vacancy caused by recall shall be filled by the remainder of the council according to the provisions of this charter. Uh further, in section one hundred of the charter, when the office of a member of council shall become vacant, the vacancy shall be filled by election of the unexpired term by majority vote of all remaining members of the council. If the council fails within thirty days to fill such a vacancy, the president of council shall fill it by appointment. As I mentioned, the meetings were null and void because they were not open to the public. There was no notice given to the public. The procedures were not filed. Also, uh with reference to today's meeting, it was a special uh council meeting agenda, which was posted and was sent by email to all of you. It was on the website, uh as well as being put on the doors and the uh council door as was the past practice of the charter. Now, what is special about this um meeting agenda is that even though Ms. Tracy is home away on leave, she was still working remotely with myself as we tried to get this uh everything in place for the meeting tonight. However, there is video of a person who shall remain unnamed in the council office as we worked unplugging and disconnecting the computers that were being used. That is why the city of East Cleveland cannot go forward because they have people that will engage in criminal activity in order to sabotage, in order to deconstruct, in order to tear down legitimate processes. In other words, they did not, that person did not want this meeting to go forward. And in order to do that, that person not only uh tried to disconnect the computers, unhook the camera as she's living around in the council chambers, sneaking under the tables, going around the desk, sailing around the table, looking through the paperwork as she tried, tried to sabotage the legitimate processes of this city. So we have a video of that, a video that she put in the office that caught her doing these malicious, evil-spirited, mean-spirited acts. And I just want to, I just want to uh give you some of your kingdom as I conclude. I want to read to you the requirements of tampering with evidence of violation of what I revise called twenty-nine, twenty-one, point one-two. It says, no person knowing that an official proceeding or investigation is in progress or is about to be or likely to be instituted shall do any of the following. One, alter, destroy, conceal, or remove any record, document, or thing with a purpose to impair its value or availability as evidence in such proceeding or investigation. I just want to tell you that this was a governmental body proceeding. This was an official processes trying to get the budget of the citizens of East Cleveland looking to be sabotaged at this meeting. Noted absence of the three members now who refuse to participate in the proceedings as part of the effort to demean, undermine, and destroy the city of East Cleveland. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mark, and I'll go first and and welcome our new appointed council person of War Three, Ms. Jack.
I'd just like to say uh to everybody, for those who did vote for me, uh thank you, first great honor goes to God, thank God. I like to let you know who I am, I'm a woman of integrity. God is first in my life. Everything I do, I make sure, when I when I wake up every morning at six o'clock before I put it to the floor, I talk to my God, before I start my day. I come from a line of ministers. I like to call myself the early, the Harriet Tubman of of early childhood education, because I I get the children ready for preschool. I had Art McCoy's daughter. I know Mr. Ernest Ernest Smith coming up to the school with his daughter. I've been East Cleveland a teacher for thirteen years, going on fourteen years. I love my job, I love what I do, I love educating young people. I would never embarrass you. I'm not here to make side deals with anybody. I would not make backyard deals and stuff like that. I'm a person of integrity because because God, at the end of my, in my day, I have to answer to God for what I do.
Right.
So I would never, you would never be able to hear anything negative about me that I'm over here doing dirty stuff. We don't have to always agree, but it's about being respected and it's about putting you first, putting you first. Not, no, I I didn't come here to hit an agenda because God put me here, so I have to answer to God for everything that I do. So I'm letting you know now, I am a woman of integrity. Because my mother said, a person, a lady, a steel, don't lie to me. I tell the truth, whether it hurts you or not. I'm not going to agree with you all the time because I'm going to look out for what's the best interest of the city. And I'm getting tired of everywhere I go, people talking about East Cleveland is bad. I've been here since nineteen seventy-one, and I remember all the good things about East Cleveland. So I graduated from Shaw High School, I was in the marching band. So I'm giving back to my communities. So I want to do the good things, and I have some people on my team here that's going to help me. And I'm going to be talking to you too also, Ernest Smith, because it is is bigger than you and I. And you know, we have, we 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 have relationship, and I'm not going to let anybody, anybody get in the way of me doing what's right for this city, doing what's right for the people, and doing what's right for God, and I stand on it, that's what I want to do.
Yeah, very briefly. When I became the president, and I'll say this again, Smith would say, I said, you can vote for me now, it doesn't matter, it's not that important to me because I'm going to do what I think is right. I've struggled with that group all year. But because I've done it so long, I was able to just handle it the best I can. I never lost my cool, nothing like that. Sometime I I get a little uh elevated with my voice and that. Uh but the thing that has been so positive is working with Brandon King. I told him, I said, I'm not here to fight you, we need to work together. Okay, they have been put together something they've been working on for fourteen years. We're getting ready to turn the city around. So this, we call this message, timing of it is horrible, horrible. We're going to, you know, I got a call yesterday, to change. We don't want you on your mind because you work with a man. I said, what the hell you want me to do? Come on, I said, what do you want me to do? That's what they call it, they're crazy. We kind of stopped fighting each other and work together. We're getting ready to do the metro part, twenty-four million, getting ready to do a hundred twenty million dollars from Lakeview going east. Okay, we're moving in the right direction, they're coming here. If we don't help our act together, they're going to buy us out and put us out. So we've got to work together. So I've said to Brandon, we're going to work, and we're working together. And they don't like that, they really don't like that, and I just shake my head. I said, what you want to fight, I'm not up here to fight him, we got to work together. Shirley and your people that really care, we need you. Let's turn this thing around, oh, we need you, okay?
We're behind you.
Okay, I am imperfect, and I have my shortcomings, but I care about people. Thirty years I've been dealing with this, and people say, why you you deal with that, you you could do so much more. I think God's gotten here for a reason. When I leave here, the next three, four years, if it's the case, this thing going to turn around and people going to be moving back to East Cleveland. So that it be written, so that it be told, I have spoken.
I think, put on those kind of words, I think our new council appointed for her kind words. Being born and raised here, I can tell you what this city looked like growing up as a child and how it functioned, how beautiful of a city it was, right? This was not anything more than a community gathering here today, a community conversation.
Yeah.
Not an official meeting, we didn't get a forum. So it's just a conversation. I would like to thank each and every one of you for coming out. Ask you to stay involved, stay active, pay attention, hold us accountable as I walk with you and the neighborhood groups to catalog your quality of life issues to then bring in front of city council to have it put any appropriations to that, address your concerns in your respective neighborhoods. Cease his greetings. Happy holidays, God bless, God bless East Cleveland.
Amen.
Thank you. We got to work to make it better. We got to work.